All right. Ready, Madam Clerk? All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I would like to do this to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Dean?
Here.
Gardner?
Here.
Leo?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Stanton?
Here.
Tresser?
Here.
Thank you. All right, everybody's got their packet and in it, we're at item number four consent agenda. Regular city meeting minutes of the 26th of September and accounts payable in the amount of $116,609.22. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
The move.
Second.
Motion by Leo, second by Tresser. Any questions or comments? All right, this is roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Tresser?
Yes.
Staff reports, we have all the reports in the packet. Do we have Lieutenant Enfield on the line as well? I can never tell if we have them or not. Can't tell.
All right. Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, hi Brett, how you doing? Got anything you want to report?
Uh, no, no, I think, uh, I think everything's, uh, been good and stuff like that, so.
All right, very good, thank you. I want to again thank our new planning and zoning administrator for an excellent report. I spent a bit of time going through it today, just looking up the different adages, understanding where everything's at. It's awesome to have that kind of detail and I did send him a thank you earlier. It's, it's a wonderful, wonderful change. Thank you. Anything to add on staff reports? Any questions?
Just for Ryan, if I could?
Yeah.
RC? Um, I noticed a few, quite a few of the short-term rental certificates. There were ones that said new owners and then ones that just said short-term rental certificates issued. I assume those are just renewals? On most of those, unless it said new?
Yes, yep. So renewals, well, some could have been, um, uh, brand new and we can make, you know, notations on that. Some may be brand new, uh, but most of them are renewals or there was a change in ownership which prompted them to have to submit a new certificate and get a new inspection.
Okay, I think it would be helpful just to have maybe clarification on those.
Yep, certainly.
Be great, but otherwise, very detailed report, really appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, just, just a question for the manager. On the Oval Beach item, um, the demo of the Swim Smart system indicates that, um, it does require a reliable telecoms connectivity. Did they happen to mention during the demo if that's wireless connectivity or that system needs to be hardwired to be functional?
Mr. Dean, I'm gonna reflect that to, uh, Mr. Cummins, if you can come back, please. Go ahead, RC.
Yeah, so, um, cellular, cellular connection, cellular, cellular connection.
Beautiful.
Is, is what it would take. So those upgrades that are occurring right now would fit in perfectly if that's the direction.
Speaks to the need for the AT&amp;T project to go through.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anything else under reports? Go ahead, Holly.
Hi, it's by Verizon, nine air, ten twenty-two.
I, yeah. I spy as well. I mean, yeah, they, they say November of this year, so that's rock and roll.
That's great.
That sounds great.
Uh, Madam Mayor, good evening, everybody. Um, AT&amp;T update manager, uh, when, when do we expect? It looks like the feasibility study has been completed and the site's viable. When do we expect to see an agreement?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part.
I'm sorry. Uh, under the AT&amp;T and update, um, by the way, thanks for the pictures. Yes, that's a cool place to be inside the ball, uh, having been up there several times. It says the feasibility study has been completed and the site's viable. Uh, when are we going to see the final engineering plans, similar to what we saw with Verizon with the operating agreement and so forth?
Uh, thank you for the question. Um, so, I did not go inside the ball. Those pictures, as you would see in your packet, came from Mr., Mr. RC over there. I, I have a, a fear of heights. So he was the one up there. Um, so AT&amp;T says that they're gonna be, uh, able to launch this by the, you know, what we call the tourist season of summer of next year. And as far as the engineering plans, um, I can provide what they have at any point in time. Um, so just, I mean, which, which one, I can go ahead and shoot those to you.
Thank you. At some point, we're going to see an agreement between the city and AT&amp;T for the use of the radon, correct?
Yeah, at some point, for sure.
What's the timeline on that?
Uh, we have no timeline at this point. So they're, they're shooting for, for summer of 2022, so.
That's an AT&amp;T.
Yeah, some of that's proprietary, um, so it's, uh, yeah, so let me know what you need. Shoot me an email and I can provide it to council and into the public and, uh, happy to provide that information.
Just interested when the council is gonna actually see the agreement so we can begin to analyze what the agreement's going to look like in terms of the services.
Mr. Gardner, I think we can make it clear and we've said already clearly.
Mayor, please, please let me finish my question. I just simply looking for when we can expect to see the agreement in front of council for us to begin analyzing and studying that.
I said I don't know the answer to that question. That's what I began with, Mr. Gardner.
Okay, anybody else? All right, very good. Uh, agenda changes. We have a few changes. Item C coastal alliance, we're gonna remove that from the agenda. For those of you who were here Wednesday or listened in, um, that is on hold until we have the finalized draft, um, letter, if you will, in conjunction with the coastal alliance, the manager and our attorneys. And that was the agreement that we would have that ready by the 19th, so that will come off. Also in your packet, page 41, will move ahead of the historic district markers and holiday seasonal lighting. Okay? All right, we have no guest speakers. Public comment on agenda items only. Welcome anybody to come up to the podium, introduce yourself. Limit your comments to three minutes on any agenda item. Come on in.
I'm David Swan at three, four, five Griffith and Sagatuck. I just wanted to say a quick thank you for all your good work at the last workshop. And I look forward to the next workshop. Sorry, I didn't make last week, but I should make it, um, following.
Very good, but you look very good. Thanks for dressing up.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else?
I'd just like to make a comment on the holiday lighting issue. It says in the agenda that this proposal goes beyond the three-year contract staff discussion with legal counsel concerns about requiring a rebid. Counsel discussed feeling comfortable with the council's ability to renew the contract. I'm, I can't find anywhere where this discussion took place and what the motion was and how the council voted. And it says here clearly that there was a discussion held. And I can't seem to find where, so thank you.
Thanks for your comment. Anybody else? Anyone online? Madam Clerk? Nobody? All right, with that, we have no unfinished business, so we'll move to new business. And as I mentioned, page 41, we'll move to the front. This is our, again, Wednesday, we had a good discussion about this really quick, it's pretty straightforward, appointing our zoning administrator and floodplain manager. You have anything to add?
No, I don't, Madam.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Ryan Cummins as the zoning and floodplain administrator.
Madam Mayor, motion to appoint Ryan Cummins as the zoning and floodplain administrator.
Second?
All right, motion by Stanton, second by Leo. Any questions, comments for discussion? If not, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? All right, excellent.
Congrats.
Yes, very good. Off of this Ryan's plate, onto your plate. All right, next up, we have the Sagatuck Douglas historical markers. Uh, Dr. Eric Golldeck was here along with, uh, Bill Hess and went through this with us in quite a bit of detail on Wednesday. Uh, I believe it was pretty straightforward. So, go ahead.
Well, Madam Mayor, as you, as you get into the discussion, uh, the only thing that I would recommend to add to the motion would be, uh, to have the final approval, uh, be subject to the historical society, sorry, historical commission.
So final approval.
Subject to historical commission review. And approval.
Approval. And review. All right, so the way I read it here, motion to approve the presented locations for the Sagatuck Historic Markers Project at Jones Park and Oval Beach with final approval, subject to H, SDHC approval and review. May I have a motion, please?
I would move to, uh, approve the presented locations for the Sagatuck Historic, uh, Historic Markers, subject to Jones Park, project of Jones Park and Oval Beach, subject to, um, whose approval was it?
Historical commission.
Well said.
All right, motion by Tresser, second by Gardner. Any questions, comments, additional? All right, this is a voice vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
You want to pose. Excellent. All right, let me find myself. Uh, next up, we have our seasonal lighting. And this was not discussed on Wednesday, so we can have a good discussion about this, but that'll turn over you.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, you have a, a summary on page thirty-five. Um, so you have a description of the lighting, uh, and proposal or contract in front of you. You are indeed at the end of a three-year contract, so you're going on year four. And so I had discussions with legal counsel, uh, to see if we could, uh, renew the contract, um, seeing that we had a, a three-year contract in place. Um, and they opined and we, we can turn it over to them, uh, that yes, in fact, uh, we can. And I think at this point, it would be appropriate to turn it over to legal counsel to get that opinion.
All right, very good.
Yes, thank you. We have, we have the benefit of Mr. Kyle Almira, who, who we have not met quite yet, um, but he's here via Zoom, so thanks Kyle for joining.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Manager, and, and good evening, council. So, we were asked to review the city code to determine whether, um, this lighting could be essentially part or the, the light, the holiday lighting could go through, be approved by council and not subject to a bid process. So generally speaking, municipal, uh, purchases, uh, when you think of case law, is just subject to really the prudent person principle of you need to make sure that you pay, you're, you're essentially receiving fair market value for what, what, uh, a municipal expenditure is. Unless you're subject to a little more stringent requirements and, you know, uh, and ordinance. So in, in this case, your, your city code does, uh, require approval, uh, for, uh, city council approval for purchases or contracts with obligations for more than $10,000, which of course this contract is. And then generally requires a bidding process, uh, subject to various exceptions. And in this case, you have a couple of exceptions that, in my opinion, would allow the city council to proceed with, uh, this particular contract and expenditure that, um, without going through the bidding process. So the first is, there is an exception related to, and the term it uses is professional services. Although it talks about them, it talks about the employment of professional services and, uh, has the term undefined. Uh, generally, a court will defer to the city and their interpretation of what, uh, a term means. And in my, in my opinion, that you could justify, uh, going through without the bidding process under that exception, which is in 3.18B. Another, uh, particular exception to the bidding process is taking, uh, it's, it's essentially a renewal of contracts. And when you look at the materials provided in the packet, it, it, there is plain language that talks about renewal of previous year display three-year agreement. Uh, I think that's strong enough language to also potentially trigger that exception as well. There's, there's likely other reasons to justify, uh, the purchase without, uh, the bidding process, and I'm happy to, to explore some of those with you, uh, if you have any questions. But in my opinion, you would not have to, uh, this purchase would just require city council approval and no bidding.
Okay. Questions?
Yeah, Mayor, um, may, may I ask, uh, since he's here, the DPW superintendent, could I ask him for his views on, uh, this particular vendor? If, you know, what his views are on, on the, the value of the contract, just, just a sense of your level of satisfaction with the work and if you think it is competitive based on your long history of doing this kind of stuff in town.
Sure. Uh, hi, Scott Herbert, Public Works Superintendent. Uh, yeah, uh, Nick Weaver and, and Chips, uh, ground cover, they're, they're top notch. They're, a big part of it is, um, you know, we, we have a lot of, a really beautiful tree canopy in the city and our garbage trucks and whatnot tend to trim those for us in the winter and along with it, some of our seasonal lighting. And, uh, so, so Chips' ground cover will work in collaboration with the Public Works Department. If it's something simple and we can take care of it, uh, we will, but they're, they're top notch as far as their response times and their customer service, and they make a lot of exceptions for us too. So there's no complaint with the service that we get.
Madam Mayor, from the, yeah, um, Scott, can you talk about some of like the nuances of the install as far, and as far as where the plugs are located and just some of the logistics and kind of quirks that we have in the city?
Sure, yeah, there's a, there's a lot of, um, we have some old electrical infrastructure in the city and it really, it's very beneficial for us to keep using, uh, an entity or, or a crew of people that are familiar with what we have. We've done some significant upgrades, um, over the past couple of years, but, um, it's, it can be finicky. So they know exactly where all the power outlets are, uh, how much, um, how much power to draw from each, each area of town to, to power the block. Uh, and they're, they know what they're doing, so.
Well, I'd like to, uh, just support that. Having been involved in this project from the very beginning, I can tell you, we've come a long way from our initial fits and starts. Uh, we, it was difficult to get to a point as it is today, which I think is, is really an excellent product, so I very much support this.
Very good. Lauren?
So just, uh,
Hold on, Scott.
Just, the last time, the last time this was bid out, the last time this was bid out was three years ago?
I, I believe so. I wasn't directly involved with that process, but yeah.
And you were probably involved with that part. It was bid out three years ago, but they had a contract prior to that, Chips? Or was it the first time?
Did we use them a year before?
I believe we did.
I think so. Yeah, but we didn't have a contract. That's just my recollection. That they, they worked long and hard with us, uh, in planting the trees. Uh, I mean, to the point where I was called downtown and said, do you like this? You know, so it was good.
Great. All right.
Very good. And you've had a good experience with them when you were there.
Yes, well, they're very cooperative and, and flexible.
Just think it's gotten better and better every year. Um, so I feel really good about it. I mean, I think the business owners downtown, just talking to everybody, I mean, it really has gotten better over the last few years when things kind of changed. And then it went back and then, padaw, it was fantastic last year, so.
Yeah, we, we've definitely heard a lot of, of varying opinions from, uh, public members, um, but we've got it dialed in. There's no daylight bulbs, they're all warm white.
Yes.
The details go on and on. The, the gap between the tree wraps, uh, that's the, the correct amount of inches. Um, it's,
It's a thing.
Very good.
Don't mess with it, no.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. All right, well, I'll, uh, entertain a motion, please.
I have a question. Uh, so real quickly, the lights are beautiful, just absolutely gorgeous. And, uh, every time I come into town in the evening, and if I come, whether I'm going north or south, I'm bothered, it's just amazing to me how beautiful, especially if it's snowing, it's just, I mean, it's like a postcard, so. Question though, is the amount that's being requested this evening, the 21,145, will be coming back again the next two years for the same approval? Are we, we approving an entire three-year agreement for sixty-one, sixty-three thousand and change, whatever it is?
Madam Mayor, please.
Yeah, this is a one-year renewal.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then two is, um, are the lights going to be on 24/7 for the hundred and, I forget what the exact period was on here, but, um, will the lights be on and off during the day?
Madam Mayor.
Sorry.
Mr. Manager.
If I could defer to Mr. Herbert.
Sure, yeah, no, I think, um, we, we've done it a couple different ways in the past, and I think, uh, you know, when, when we've gone with the timer system, it's, it's been pretty chaotic because each of those timers, they can be a fraction of a second off, and then as time goes on, they get less and less, uh, in sync with one another. So it requires a pretty hefty amount of labor just to keep them all working together simultaneously, the way, the way that they should, so, um, you know, for that reason, and, and the LEDs, the, the cost is pretty minimal for, to keep these things on. And so I think without question, it would have cost more money to provide the labor to get them realigned with, with one another once they're out of time, uh, versus just leaving them on. So we got, we had pretty good feedback from just leaving them on all day.
And just a quick question, specific to that, leaving them on, is this correct that the daily energy cost is $4.61 for all of them or per strand? I couldn't tell in the.
Do not have that information right now.
On the screen, Mr. Herbert. I mean, we did, we did a cost analysis, this, this exact conversation came up last year. You can always refer to those minutes if you want to, but yeah, I, I mean, this was the basic cost analysis of leaving them on 24/7 was probably $600.
Yeah, and, and my question is not so much around the cost, because I know these are super efficient lights, it's more around the optics around this. I know when people come into town and see lights on during the day, especially for, there's some optics around that, that it's not efficient, that we should be turning them off during the day for energy conservation. That was my only question. It sounds like the infrastructure won't be able to easily support a flip of a switch with a timer. It's, it's a little bit more complicated than that, right?
It is, yeah. Fair, fair point, but you know, and there's another component of it too, that, you know, our, our work hours are not during the evening. So when we do have a malfunction, the public works isn't necessarily there to see it. We rely on, uh, community input. And some, you know, so it was pretty common for us to see a block or two, um, without power, when with, with them on all day long, we can identify that the issues during work hours and not wait until it's raining and it's freezing and, uh, we can jump right on it as we see it. So that's another component of it, worth, worth consideration.
Go ahead, Ken.
Uh, while you're here, Scott, man, um, I assume you're anticipating putting up the Christmas tree again in Coffin Park.
Oh, yes. Yep, absolutely. John Steele, I wouldn't want to deprive him of that. He keeps saying every year, you know, this is it, you're on your own after this year, Scott, but he keeps coming back and I love it. I've never seen anyone more freaked up about Christmas than Sean Steele. He is.
Yeah, his ugly sweaters, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott.
All right, I'll entertain a motion, please.
Well, I'd move to approve the contract with Nick's ground cover in the amount not to exceed 24,000 for holiday lighting.
Okay.
Motion by Tresser, second by Stanton. Any other questions? Oh, this is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Dean?
Gardner?
I would just like to make comment that going forward, I would appreciate getting this information more in advance of a discussion, so we should have had this at the workshop. I'm fully supportive of the lights, love it, it's absolutely wonderful. I will vote yes. Just would like to see this, I would personally like to see this information a little bit more in advance considering the amount of investment.
Leo?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Tresser?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. With that, we're to public comments on anything. Anybody would like to come up to the podium, introduce yourself. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Anyone?
Madam Mayor, if you want to dismiss, uh, Mr. Almira and.
Oh, yeah, thanks Kyle. Appreciate you.
Yeah, have a nice evening.
All right, take care.
Yes.
All right, nobody in chambers, anybody online who'd like, like to make public comments? Please introduce yourself, limit your comments to three minutes. Let's see. All right, very good. With that, we'll move on. You have quite a few letters in support of the coastal alliance. We had that in our packet the other day, and I think there were several more that were added. Uh, with that, we'll go to boards, commissions and committee reports. I'll start with Ken.
The harbor authority has not met so far this month.
Holly?
Lauren? Uh, Historic District Commission, we approved new siding deckwork on the Windjammer condos on Culver Street. Non-contributing structure, but they're gonna get a really nice space lift. Yeah.
Uh, the planning commission will be meeting next Thursday, which would be the, um, nineteenth, twentieth, anyway, whatever date that is. Um, I do want to bring up, um, for those of you that were at the League of Women Voters Voters Forum on, um, last, uh, Wednesday.
Is this regarding planning?
Yes, it is. There were several discussions about, questions about short-term rentals and waterfront development, and I was really, um, really impressed by the comments of both sitting council members as well as the candidates. And, and I want to bring to council, there was a couple of comments made that, we'd be, we should be looking towards the planning commission for some recommendations regarding short-term rentals and, and waterfront development. Um, I, I would, uh, ask that council give direction to the planning commission to begin working up policy considerations and discussions around those two items of interest. There's a lot of discussion and great comments made at that meeting. And, um, would like some direction from council as the, as your planning commission representative to begin that discussion. I think there'll be a lot of interest, especially around the tri-community master plan update around those two topics.
Uh, PPW Committee meets, uh, October 25th.
All right, very good. And the recycling committee meets here next week, so, I'll have a meeting. All right, without council comments, we'll start back with Ken.
No.
All good? Holly?
Uh, I just want to make the comment that, uh, are really, um, commend Jamie and, uh, both Ryans on the packets. Um, the packets are so well done. The amount of information that's available, um, to the city, um, with the new planning and zoning reports. Um, it's, it's just, it's very easy to read, um, and I, I just really appreciate the time and the improvement, um, since when I started. So I want to link that out. Um, I appreciated HOX Boeing and on Coastal Alliance. And I'm very excited about, uh, Verizon and AT&amp;T moving forward. And, uh, excited about the holiday lighting. It seems like, uh, the LED lights are a game changer, really, in terms of energy usage. We could really run lights for such a long time for five, six hundred dollars. It's, yeah. It's good. Thanks. That's all I have, thank you.
Lauren, uh, League of Women Voters, wanted to thank them for putting on a really great forum and all the residents that came and listened in on that. It was a two-hour forum, so I know a lot of people were sitting through, you know, that and really, uh, got a lot of great feedback from people about hearing on, uh, hearing about all of the topics that are going on in city council. And we did, um, a lot of people discussing short-term rentals and what's going on with that and looking forward to discussions that we'll have in the future about that.
Thank you. Um, I'm just a big announcement, the Mount Bald Head fence is completed. So I was talking with, uh, superintendent Herbert, and he's got some pictures, I'll be going up there myself to inspect, and, um, it's, that's just a long culmination of a great project and we'll make that site more secure, uh, for the future. Um, I do want to go back to the end of the nine twenty-six twenty-two meeting regarding the League of Women Voters Forum. Specific request was made by both myself and, uh, council member Becken to, uh, potentially put that event onto the city's webpage. The mayor unilaterally made a decision on council's behalf that that was not going to, going, going to take place, and I just want to remind the council that the mayor is just one member of a seven-member body. And, uh, I would have appreciated more discussion around that. There might have been some leverage with the council members to do that. Just a reminder that that discussion's important for this council as a body, not an individual decision. Thank you.
Uh, Mayor, um, I would like to echo what, uh, what Lauren said. I would like to thank the league, and I really would like to thank all of the, uh, the voters in Sagatuck. Uh, there were so many that turned out it was a standing room only event, and, and once again, I, I thoroughly enjoyed, uh, engaging, uh, with, with, with all the candidates and the voters. Um, you know, it really does, um, renew my faith in, in, in our democracy when we can all behave civilly and respect each other and, and, and really focus on the issues rather than, than personal attacks. So I, I'm very grateful to the league for, for doing that.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I did, I did have one thought. Speaking of short-term rentals, um, would it be possible, you think, for us to get a briefing from somebody who knows what the status is of the state's position? Uh, in that legislation? I mean, it would be ideal if we could get the candidate, some of the candidates in here to talk to us about their position with regard to that. But failing that, which we probably would, wouldn't get, uh, I'd like to get a brief done where exactly that stands and what chances are of success.
Yeah, actually, the Michigan Municipal League.
Yeah, actually, the Michigan Municipal League would probably be more than happy to do that because they are lobbying organization, have been working quite diligently on our behalf, each municipality's behalf. I think they'd probably be more than happy to come in, um, because they are always looking for our help to lobby our senator who is up front and center on that one.
That'd be great. Anything else? Uh, also enjoyed the, the league forum. It was very informative. I, I was very delighted with the turnout, which is always wonderful to see, um, our community's interest in what's happening with our local elections. It was also very wonderful to see another weekend of quite busy tourists. A lot of visitors in town. It was absolutely wonderful. The weather was gorgeous again. Um, the Oktoberfest, huge hit. Um, Scott and I were over there Sunday volunteering and went over Saturday to help a little bit. And it, they, I don't think they even expected, uh, that big of a crowd. So I think it'll be, uh, an, an annual event moving forward. So if you see Matt Ballmer and Liz Engel, um, give them a big shout.
And just, just fair warning, it's thirsty work.
Yeah. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So, second, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right.